Hello, I am Enid Weixelbaum. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters in Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time. I would like to welcome all to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Rochester. Would also like to thank our generous partners in tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters in Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this forum. The sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as members of the audience. As there's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight, or speak to them after the event. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve your community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. All candidates who filed for office were invited to this forum. At least two candidates for any given office must be present for us to hold a forum. Tonight, we are going to -- our event features candidates for the office of President of the Rochester City Council. Candidates for this seat are Jeff Thompson, Jan Tronson, Randy Staver, and Michael Wojcicki. Each candidate will have one minute to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters, our partners, and the audience. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have one minute each to make closing statements. The candidates do have the opportunity to make three rebuttals during the evening. Those rebuttals will be 30 seconds in length. I'd like to remind the audience to remain quiet during the forum and turn off all electronic devices. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters Rochester member Julie Gilkinson. Also asking questions from the Rochester Post Bulletin is Mike Doherty and Julie Fiesel from the Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers in order to determine the order in which they give their opening statement. And Mr. Wojcicki has drawn number one, so he will begin with his opening statement.
Well, my name is Michael Wojcicki.
Hit the button on the bottom.
Hello? Hello, my name is Michael Wojcicki. I'm a candidate for Rochester City Council President, and I currently sit on the Ward Two seat on the Rochester City Council, serving my second term. I cut my teeth in the Virch Lane Trailer Court and the Jefferson Housing Projects in northern Minnesota. I came here, I stand on the shoulders of many people who helped me achieve the opportunity that I received here. I'm asking for your vote for President so that I can be the voice for all of the strong Rochester. I stand here in support of the 300 kids in our school district that don't have a home. I stand here in support of the neighborhoods that deserve to be free of crime, free of blight, and full of opportunity. I stand here to address the affordable housing crisis that we face in this community. I stand here to address the lack of transit that fails to serve our folks. I'm asking for your vote on March 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Going next is Mr. Tronson.
Good evening, my name is Jan Tronson. I'm running for City Council President. By being to the City Council President, I will be a full-time council member, president that will be an asset to the citizens of Rochester to better serve them. Right now, there is not a full-time person there, and my opponents have full-time jobs, which is not an asset, which holds them back. I also bring an independent voice that reaches across all wards with no strings attached to any one entity. I will not have conflicts of interest like my opponents and other members of the council on the DMC and sales tax projects, which sustain my vote and sustain your voice. That is very important. I also have 37 years of boots on the ground in the construction industry, which is not presently on the council. With the new DMC, sales tax projects moving forward, that'd be a great asset to the community and to the council and to the staff to be able to assist them in doing that. With that, like I said, I hope that you will support me in this election coming up on the 19th of March, as I can do the job and I'll be full-time. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, thank you.
My name is Jeff Thompson. I was born and raised in Rochester, Minnesota, graduate of Rochester Mayo High School, University of Minnesota, Hammer Law School. People ask me all the time, "Why are you interested in public service?" I said, "I think it's a genetic quality." My grandfather, Ben Hwain, had served on the Longfellow School Board for about 30 years and helped get Longfellow School built in '54. I ran for election 17 years ago for county board, served on the county board for eight years, served as county board chair in 2002. The main asset, I think, I bring is just my 30 years of experience in working with all units of governments, and most especially with the DMC initiative. I have been certified as specialist for 25 years in real estate, and I think that's a great asset with the DMC initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Staver, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just don't mix it up at the poll. Good evening, my name is Randy Staver. I currently serve in the support of the Fifth Ward and also in the interim role of council president, a role I've served in for the last eight months. I believe we need to retain strong leadership in that role, and I'm driven toward consensus decision-making in that regard. Focus of my campaign continues to be public service, and I have a track record there in terms of supporting the move of a fire station to an area that better supports our expanding city, supporting our colleagues on the county board as they seek a seventh seated judge to better serve the judicial function in our community. I had a stoplight installed at a very busy intersection where we had seen fatalities and improved the public safety of that neighborhood. And of course, I supported technology in the role of our law enforcement so that they can be better informed and perform their activities more efficiently. I believe there's room for viewpoints on the city council, but we need to do so in a very respectful way, and I look forward to the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll go on to our questions portion of tonight's event. I'll tell you that I'm using a chart that has random numbers on it, so the order in which you'll get the questions will be random from here on. Our first question from the League of Women Voters will go to Mr. Thompson first. What are the characteristics of an effective council president, and how do you fulfill them?
I think the role of being an effective council president starts with leadership qualities, and having experience, and knowing the constituency and the history of Rochester, Minnesota, but probably most of all, being a consensus builder. As I said, I've worked with the city, county, townships, and the school system for 30 years, and with my 30 years of experience and given I'm 55 years of age now, I think wisdom is always the better part of valor. I think that's something that comes with experience and wisdom, but Rochester, you know, has gone from a small rural community to first-class city status, and I think the next 50 years, we'll be looking at Rochester being a world-class city, and I think I can help that happen.
Mr. Wojcicki.
Sorry, I'm just a little more comfortable standing up. Ultimately, it goes back to values, and I don't think there's any replacement for courage, honesty, and an unwavering belief in social justice for all the people that we represent. Leadership is absolutely critically important. You seek to achieve consensus, but more importantly, you seek to receive input and make a good decision based on that input. Consensus is not always the end-all solution. Deciding that an African-American represented three-fifths of one person was a compromise, however not the right decision. It's important that a leader of the city council have vision. It's important that they can draw a picture of where Rochester is going to be in 25 years. How do we take our unprecedented growth opportunities here and make sure we build a community that's great, not only for the big employers and talent, not only for the talented scientists we have, but for the entire community?
Thank you. Mr. Staver.
Well, certainly, leadership qualities are germane to the job of the city council president. I do believe that consensus and ability to listen to people is very important as we form our solutions. A phrase I'm fond of is that we have two ears and one mouth, and we really should use them and rent them that proportion, and I really do believe that. We have a great deal of values that we bring that are instilled in our community, and we need to bring that to the table. More important, we need to conduct any of our discussions in a very respectful manner. We need to treat everyone that approaches the council with the utmost of respect. If they take the time to come up and express their views, we need to hear them out and do that in a very respectful manner. Everyone is entitled to their opinion, and that's what I bring to the table, an ability to listen to everyone and consider their viewpoints.
Thank you, Mr. Tronson.
I think a leader in a community needs to get behind his businessmen and his citizens. I think it's important that we respect our businessmen, and we'll teach them when they come before the council that we will respect them. This last year, that was not the case. A prominent businessman in this town pretty much had his business taken away, and some remarks were made at the council and everything, and after that, that took us into a lawsuit. That's not a leader. A leader is someone that will look at that and say, "I would bring to the table and say, 'How can we change these jobs if our business people are paying the taxes, our citizens, and these new projects on the DMC come forward, and the sales tax? I want to move forward to make sure that our contractors and our builders and citizens get that tax dollars back, but we put to them work first, instead of sending out like the county did this last time and took the bid out of state and flipped the coin for the Watsons.'" That was county, not city, but the city can do the same thing. We need to start looking at it and supporting our business, because after all, they supported us.
Thank you. Our second question from the League of Women Voters. What infrastructural and/or revitalization needs within the city do you see, and how do you propose to keep them up to date and in good repair? What infrastructure or revitalization needs do you see? Now, we're going to begin with Mr. Staver.
Well, I think a lot of our infrastructure questions were started last fall with the passage of the sales tax extension by nearly a two-to-one margin. Embedded in the sales tax are just a number of infrastructure projects, whether it be roads, transportation, and a number of elements that will improve our community. What's very important to me, however, is that we asked for your trust last fall, when we asked for your vote, and now it's incumbent on us to follow through and not waste that trust and follow through on those projects in a way that gives you the most value for the dollars that you've invested. But again, invested in many of those projects are a number of ways that we will improve the infrastructure and environment throughout the community and the region.
Thank you. Mr. Wojcicki.
Okay. The rotation is confusing me a little bit, so...
The rotation's going to be different every time.
Okay. Try and come up with some really easy-to-follow signs. Okay. What I always like to tell people is when we talk about infrastructure, we talk about one of the biggest assets a community has, the biggest expense, the biggest liability a community has to maintain. Let's talk about the city of Rochester. We are approaching the geographic footprint of the city of Minneapolis, yet we have less than one-third of the population. What does that mean when it comes time to pay the bills and to maintain our infrastructure? It means we're digging ourselves a hole that we're going to have a hard time getting out of. We need to make sure that we don't necessarily focus on new infrastructure, but better maintaining that which we already have. It's important that we go into neighborhoods that were perhaps designed wrong, designed poorly, built shoddy, places like Simran Corridor, places that have just fallen into disrepair over the years, and invest in those neighborhoods, bring them up to a community standard so that people that live there enjoy the same quality of life as those that live in other neighborhoods as well.
Mr. Tronson.
What we need to do is, I believe, we need to give money back into education. The sales tax that was passed is CTEC. If we can't build our students, and our students don't have the trade, the ability, and the education, they're not going to stay in Rochester. It doesn't matter how well or how good we build Rochester. We need to be able to create those jobs, and CTEC and the sales tax are the wonderful way to get started. We've talked about destination medical all the time. How about we talk about a trade school from around the world? People who come to a trade school in Rochester, Minnesota, and show us in Rochester that we can teach the best and the most brilliant in the trades. That's very important. If we want to bring jobs back to Rochester, keep jobs around this area, the chamber will tell you, "There's jobs waiting for skilled people. We can't fill them. There's no way." As far as the buildings in Rochester, I'll bring up the sore subject of the Mayo Civic Center. I think that the Mayo Civic Center, with us, the building's leaking, things are going on. Back when we passed the first sales tax, we need to take care of that, the exterior of the building. Thank you.
Well, there's no question, having served on the county board, that maintenance is definitely the preferred route. You let things be neglected, it costs a lot more money to build something new. With regard to some of the blighted areas in Rochester, we've already alluded to the Simran Corridor, 41st Street corridor. For some reason, historically in Rochester, it seems like we seem to focus on new structures, but we tend to neglect our old structures. The North Broadway, there's kind of some dead zone areas there, southeast, but we've got to cure these blighted areas. We're going to be Minneapolis-St. Paul in the next 50 years, but we don't want to have the St. Palters, for example, that North Minneapolis has, the crime. And we've got to focus on youth. When the county commissioner, I was a strong youth advocate, I've always said, "We need to build more youth centers, fewer prisons." It costs a lot of money to support the prison system, and we can learn from our neighbor to the North Minneapolis, do their positive things, but try to avoid the negative things.
Yes, a rebuttal.
One thing that bothers me a little bit, as we talk about the future so much, let's not forget the past. Those of you that were here 20-some years ago remember when Rochester was a designated number-one city. Since then, we've only gotten better. We've increased jobs, we've built new homes, we've brought new businesses, we've brought new vitality to this community. That didn't happen without a vision. I think we've done a lot of things right. We can build on that as we go forward, and you all made that happen. We had vision, and we can carry that into the future.
Are there any other rebuttals? You want to move on? You want to move on?
Yeah, I just have to say one thing. Having lived here my whole life, I've gone to a lot of concerts, to the Mayo Civic Center, but if you look at downtown Minneapolis, for example, I attended the University of Minnesota from '75 to '85, when it went kind of from the Foshe Tower being the largest building to what it is now. That took about a seven-year period. But what does Minneapolis have? They have a state-of-the-art civic center, but they also have things like Target Center, Orway, other facilities. Rochester, we just have the civic center. It's a capacity issue. Look at the Riverside concerts, 15,000, 20,000 people attend those, but we don't have a venue, indoor venue, to hold events like that, so we lose out to the trifecta, lacrosse, Ames, and Mankato. We've heard that forever, so we need to address those kind of issues.
Any other rebuttals? Our mic is out, so we are just going to speak up carefully. Our next questions are coming from the Post Bulletin, and, excuse me, the first question from the Post Bulletin will start with Mr. Tronson.
Okay. Everyone's mentioned the DMC project. What's one question you have about it still, and why is that important?
I think the question that I have for the DMC is that we need to keep transparency at the foremost, up front. I think it's a wonderful thing that DMC and we're going to bring these jobs to Rochester, but at the same time, I've heard today that IBM just laid off a bunch of people and sent them down the road. We're going backwards, not forward. So I think when DMC, it puts more credibility on the DMC that says, "Are we actually going to go forward with that?" Transparency is job one. When we go to the state senate up there, we need to be honest with them, we need to be forthright with them, and we need to have more meetings. The other night in here, we had a meeting, 100 people walked away because the chamber here was too small to hold it. So a lot of people walk about perception. We've got to get that perception back to reality, and I cannot stress enough, transparency through this whole thing in order to get the citizens behind the DMC project.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
The jobs issue is important, especially with what's going on at IBM. I think the DMC offers a great opportunity, perhaps, to draw other Fortune 500 companies, possibly, to Rochester. That would be important. I think a lot of people are wondering, you know, how much power this board is going to have, and is it going to tie up chunks of real estate for what periods of time? I think there's some uncertainty with that, but I think the bill is, in its early sessions, I was hearing pieces of what's in the bill, and then there was the issues of, you know, conflict of interest. Can people who are elected officials, especially if they work for the Mayo Clinic, also, you know, serve on that board? And of course, that would be an issue with some of the members of the city council, and even with the spouses, if they work for Mayo, would they be disqualified from serving on that board? And so I don't know if that issue has been finally determined. I saw that in the newspaper article, but I didn't see that mentioned in the bill, so I don't know where that's at, but there's a lot of uncertainty yet, but we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Staver.
It is ringing. Well, I suppose the main question I have about DMC at this point is, "Why not?" Everything we've heard so far portrays this as just a wonderful economic model of an opportunity for growth, not only for Rochester, but also for our entire region. One of the things we've heard, some statistic quoted, "We have over 50,000 people that come into Rochester every day, every business working day to work here. We have people coming from over 50 counties in the state of Minnesota, western Wisconsin, northern Iowa." So this is not only something of benefit for Rochester, but our community, our region, the state of Minnesota. So I wonder, "Why not?" We certainly have to give due diligence in terms of transparency and things of that nature, but this could be a model, something that should be copied for other areas of our state, perhaps even nationwide. We've received inquiries from New York and Las Vegas, wondering, "How are we, what's this all about, and how can we get hold of that?" So that tells me something about the importance of this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Wojcicki.
Let's be very clear that DMC is an opportunity of a lifetime for Rochester, and the details are what we have to discuss, but we need to work together to try and make this incredible opportunity happen, but with opportunity comes risk as well. My biggest concern with the DMC project is, "How is the entire community going to have a voice?" The first language that came out that the city council supported actually would have had two Mayo employees and one Mayo retiree serving, meaning three people that represented Rochester. I was the one city councilman who raised some concerns about this. Administration told me I was the only person that was concerned about that language, so that language stayed. I believe that ultimately, we need to make sure that we're going to have a voice for a lot of people, because you look at those jobs being created by Mayo's own numbers, something like 50% of these jobs are actually paying below the median household income right now. So we have some issues that we're going to have to deal with this as well.
Thank you. Our next question from the Post Bulletin will begin with Mr. Staver. Oh, sorry, there's a rebuttal.
One thing I'd like to bring up that really needs to be forward with the DMC project is eminent domain. In this room the other night, that was a huge topic. We've got to make sure that we protect people's property, that it just can't be taken from them. Over and over that night in the room, that's what I heard. I think that is the most important thing in this eminent domain, that DMC project moves forward. How are we going to protect some of our neighborhoods, or are they going to take some of the neighborhoods away because they say, "We need to build high-rise, we need to change your neighborhood"? DMC has to look at these neighborhood organizations and let these neighborhood organizations have a say in it and move forward with that. Without that, you will not get the support.
Thank you. Any other rebuttal? Okay, our question from the Post Bulletin. Again, we will begin with Mr. Staver.
Okay. Looking ahead, the people have spoken, you're elected city council president, what's your first action?
Get a good night's sleep. No, actually, again, having served in that role for eight-plus months now, it's largely to continue. When I originally took this role back in July, it was a very personal thing for me to maintain continuity, that we give confidence to the community that local government would continue even though we were missing a dear friend. And that's what I look to continue, if I'm fortunate enough to prevail in this contest. Continue what we're doing. We have, as I say, a number of projects that have been initiated under the sales tax. DMC is certainly in front of us, perhaps, the Mayo Civic Center. We're taking a look at revamping the operations of that and perhaps expanding it. So we have just a number of things in our community that we're talking about. Veterans museum, we've got a children's museum up and running now. So it's mainly just kind of keep the thing, keep things running. We're doing a great job, and you guys are all part of it, and I just want to help continue that.
Thank you. Mr. Tronson?
First thing that I'd like to do is hit the ground running and learning, being the full-time person and learning from the staff, visiting the staff, and you've all suddenly seen the easy button? Well, here's Rochester's easy button right here, if I'm elected as your council president. I think it's important that we go to the neighborhoods, that we attend the neighborhoods, that we learn what the people want, and we need to be able to support them. What's not happening now, I think, in that cases, is that when they come before the council, they're ignored, or their questions aren't answered. I think it's important that, we have wonderful city staff, but I think it's important, as a leader, that you can answer some of those questions. You shouldn't always have to go back to the city staff and direct them to ask her, "Every question you need to know, you need to know that." I'll put the time out there, I have the full time to do that, the rest of the people do not have to do that. So as a full-time person, there's things I would like to change in the city council and work with the council members to move this Rochester into the next decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wojcicki.
You are certainly keeping us on our toes, for sure. What I want to do is I begin the leadership, the city council president is, put the focus where it should be. I want to end the days of the city council spending endless hours talking about billboards or salary structures or crows, and I want to talk about the big-picture items. I want to talk about how are we going to build 10,000 affordable housing units in the next 20 years? I want to talk about how we're going to take care of these homeless kids in our school district. I want to talk about how we get a real transit system that works. Let's talk about the big-picture items, the things that the city council should be focused on, that are going to solve the most immediate concerns we have for the most people, and then, and then we can go back to some of these smaller details, but we have got to keep our eye on the ball and have to prioritize and show the leadership for the most important issues for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
For me, it's a lot about communication. I think when I was on the county board, we used to regularly have tri-government meetings with city, county, townships. I think we've gotten away from that, and we see some expensive duplication of services. A lot of the, each entity built these, a lot of these work garages that cost millions and millions of dollars. The county built one, I think RPU built one. When I was on the board, Dave Senjam was on the city council, and these professional consultants we paid big money to, their recommendation was for joint garages. There's 10,000 baby boomers a day retiring between now and 2030. We're not going to have the revenue source, and we need to consolidate services and act smarter, and once again, be a big youth advocate. Sort of like swimming pool. We need to do something like a small Wisconsin Dells there. Owatonna has their Serengeti. Little town of Mable just built about a 1.55 community center, and 60% of that was funded, you know, privately, but little communities are doing things, and we always have money to spend on adults in Rochester, but not enough for the youth.
Thank you. A rebuttal?
And I think I just wanted to pause and take a moment to really point out and appreciate the other local levels of government we have, because we don't do everything right, but in the big picture, Olmsted County AAA financial rating, city of Rochester AAA financial rating, RPU's financial rating, the school districts financial rating, absolutely excellent. These are well-run organizations with great people, the line-level staff work incredibly well together. What we need to do is we'll talk about some of the overhead, things that we can do, like finance, IT, HR, some of these things that we can share as a county, but not throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Our next question from the Chamber of Commerce will be offered first to Mr. Wojcicki. Okay. Would you agree that the city council should have a greater oversight of the school system?
system, and if so, how?
No, I wouldn't agree. I think that's the domain of the school board, to actually oversee the school system, but I think there's a lot of opportunities for partnership that we're missing out on today. The fact is, the city who controls zoning controls some of the building requirements. We can take on issues like 300 homeless kids, and we should be a partner in that process. We can help with the transportation system to help free up some dollars for K-12 education, possibly getting full-day kindergarten, possibly getting universal access to pre-K. Let's talk about making our transit system work in those key after-school hours, so in the hours where kids get in trouble, they can actually go out, catch a bus, to ride some of our incredible amenities, things like Cory Hill, things like the library, Boys and Girls Club, all the different programs we have around this community. Let's make sure we don't place our kids under house arrest because of how we built this community, give them the resources, help the school district, but we should not take over the school district programming itself.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, this issue has come up quite a bit this week. Having been a public defender, court-appointed attorney, I represent a lot of juveniles that weren't attending school or committing serious crimes in the community, and that has a big impact on our tax dollars. All the tax dollars come out of the same pot. That kid, as soon as he's in the court system, that's costing thousands of dollars, the next thing that happens, the county files a child's petition, Children's Protective Service, that costs thousands of dollars. And I've always said, you know, what we heard from our grandparents, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. We have to maintain this juvenile in the prison system from age 15 to 75, what does that cost? Let's head off the problem upfront, give them the resources they need, this community has plenty of resources. That's why I say, if we have some more of these tri-government meetings, try to pool our resources on those problem areas, we can easily do that, and save the taxpayers a lot of money in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Staver.
Well, first off, I'd like to say, it sounds like Mr. Wojcicki has softened his stance from the statements he made a few days ago, in which he said he would start attending every school board meeting. I have a great deal of faith in our elected bodies, whether it be the school board or the county board, and I believe they have equally complex issues to deal with as they carry out their day-to-day work. I have a lot of faith in our elected folks, and I do not intend to insert myself into their business. That said, there are ways that we can strategically form partnerships. We're doing things like the CTEC project, where we're working collaboratively with the school system to engage those students and make them workforce-ready before they bail out of the system. So there are ways that we can partner with our colleagues, whether it be school board, county board, and other groups, and neighborhoods, and all of those groups, but we don't need to insert ourselves into their daily business.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Again, the CTEC program is a good start, and that's where the city needs to step up. If we can build some buildings and do some things for our students...